Thank you so much for being here at our first regular meeting. Last night's meeting presented us with some challenges. And I recognize that we did not fully meet the expectations of our job we were elected to do. However, I hope that we have all had an opportunity to review the Policy Procedures, Town Code, and Open Meetings Act. And I am confident, confident, that tonight's meeting will proceed much more efficiently. As I mentioned last night, we don't have to agree on everything. But we must agree to operate as a team with open communication and a shared purpose. It's essential that we set a tone of professionalism, unity, and service. And that's exactly what I am committed to do as we move forward. Well, last night didn't go as smoothly as we hoped. I am committed to working with the new council and offering them patience as they learn the ropes. As I was told eight years ago, this is a marathon and not a race. We are in it for the long haul, and together we will continue to grow and improve as a council. With that said, I would like to officially call this regular meeting for May 13, 2025, to order at 6:00 PM. Mr. Town Clerk, would you please do a roll call?
Mayor James.
Here.
Councilman Guttenberg.
Here.
Councilman McCormick.
Here.
Councilman Sampson.
Here.
Councilman Johnson.
Here.
Madam Mayor, you have a call.
Thank you so much. And if I could ask you all to stand and while we do the Pledge of Allegiance and join us, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. So first official item on the agenda is approval of a minute of the agenda, meeting agenda. And I would like to amend today's agenda to include the adoption of the Rules of Procedures, Resolution 23-01, as listed on the special meeting agenda last night, and also to include the appointments to the boards and commissions. Do I have a second?
Yes, I will second.
Any discussion? And respectfully, there will be 7.3, 7.4. Mr. Town Clerk, would you please do a roll call? When your name is called, please say aye if you approve the amendment to tonight's regular meeting, and nay if you do not.
Mayor James.
Aye.
Councilman Guttenberg.
Aye.
Councilman McCormick.
Aye.
Councilman Sampson.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson.
Aye.
The motion passes.
Thank you so much. So before officially calling the first public hearing to order, I would like to ask the Director of Legislative Services to review the procedures for tonight's hearing. Director Phipps, would you please review the procedures for this evening's hearing?
Town officials, public hearings are conducted in the following manner. Call to order, review of public notices, summary of town staff report into recommendation, questions by the town council to town staff, written documents entered into the record, speakers from the public, additional questions by the town council, closing of public hearing. Written documents for the record submitted in advance of the public hearing are provided to the presiding officer prior to the opening of the public hearing. At the appropriate time, the presiding officer will call registered speakers to the podium. Speakers who have registered to speak in advance via the town webpage will be recognized prior to speakers who register upon arrival at the public hearing. At the discretion of the presiding officer, speaker's comments may be limited to three minutes and may not be yielded to another person. A sign-in sheet was provided at the entry of council chambers for any public hearing attendees to register to speak if they have not already done so in advance via the town webpage. Registration to speak will end when the first public hearing is opened.
Thank you very much for joining us. I would like to officially open this public hearing of the fiscal year 2026 fee schedule at 6:03 PM. Director Phipps, has the notice of the public hearing been properly advertised?
Yes, Madam Mayor. For the record, this public hearing was advertised in the Southern Maryland newspaper in the April 25, 2025 issue. Certificate of publication is attached to the meeting agenda. Notice that this public hearing was also advertised on the town webpage.
Thank you. Will the Assistant Town Manager and Town Treasurer provide recommendations on behalf of the staff regarding the fiscal year 2026 fee schedule, please?
Mayor James, it's recommended that the fee schedule be adopted as presented.
Thank you. Does the council have any questions for Assistant Town Manager or Town Treasurer? Councilman Sampson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just have two questions. One, on the residential refuse collection fee. It states on page three and four of the enterprise fund document and page six under the refuse collection rates that this fee is proposed to increase the deficit projected for two personnel in the sanitation department and for the increase of the fees. Why not just propose that strictly in the sanitation fee or that service fee? Why break it out by adding the refuse collection?
Well, that is the sanitation fee. So there's the collection fee, and there's several. There's different ones for residential, commercial, those, everything increased 3%. But we did add an additional one for those with additional cans above one can. This is a new fee to help gap that deficit to more line with the water and sewer, how we charge based on usage, and not a flat fee for every resident.
So maybe I'm not asking the question correctly. What I'm trying to figure out is why not just increase that fee as opposed to adding a new fee?
And the reason is because last year there was a 25% increase. And we're trying to minimize the increase. And we're also trying to make it so that residents aren't charged a flat fee if one resident's only using one trash can or another resident's using three trash cans. Kind of the same concept with the water and sewer. You get charged based on how much you use.
Okay. And my second question is that according to the first page of the memorandum on the fee schedule, the major facility fees have increased 16% based on updates to capital capacity. Can you give two examples of what those are?
So we have done the mod one capital improvement. That was a over $5 million project. There's also the Southwest Quadrant Pump Station. So I added those to the schedule that was done a few years ago when we had the analysis done on this fee. And based on those additions, this fee went up to, it increased 16%. This is a fee to the developer, not the residents, to help support the cost of increased capacity as the town population grows.
And just for the record and my clarification, what is mod one?
So that's the wastewater treatment plant. There's different, there's four mods. I'm probably not the best person to explain how the wastewater treatment plant works, but it is one of the pieces to treat the wastewater before it is disposed, I guess.
Okay. And so what you're saying is those increases are not being bared by the residents, correct?
Correct. Because the resident shouldn't have to pay as we increase the asset to accommodate capacity due to development.
Okay. Got it. Thank you.
Any other questions? Gotcha.
Just want to follow on to that. What is the impact to the overall sanitation budget of the multi-can fee? Do we know how big of an impact that is?
Unfortunately, not at this time. We are actually, we just met with Public Works and our billing coordinator to figure out how to start implementing that, how to communicate it to residents as this is coming up. I don't know the direct because we don't know how, if people moved and just inherited a trash can and never turned it in. So we want to make sure that residents are aware this fee is coming up. Our records show this. If you want to return a trash can, you can. The other thing I wanted to make note is there is an additional fee for commercial. So that additional can fee is the same rate as the additional residential fee, which I believe is like $32.60 per quarter, something like that. I have it in here. So it's not a huge increase, but it will help mitigate some of the deficit that we have.
So we don't know how much of an impact that'll have on the deficit that we're projecting, but it will have some impact, but we're just going to have to see.
But it's also completely new. So we don't know how many that will decide they don't need a second trash can. We don't know how many residents who haven't been using such a second trash can, but using their own, and we've been picking it up. So that it's, we'll have an idea after the first year.
Okay. So that's more of a fair question for the Public Works Department to determine how they're going to implement that.
Yeah.
Gotcha. Thank you for that.
Any other questions?
So first, thank you for putting this together. First question goes to the fees for public utility services including sanitation, a 3% increase across the board. Was there an outside agency or any consulting firm that we consulted with to figure out why we're going with a 3% increase year over year? Or was it internally decided?
So there is a rate study, but it's incomplete. So I can't use that as the basis. I did a 3% because of the large increases that were done last year. So, okay. And the only one that is of a concern was sanitation. And that's why we looked at an additional can fee to help mitigate that. The others, the, there's, I believe, a $4,000 surplus in water. And then there's a surplus in both sewer and stormwater. But the idea is that those amounts would go into fund balance to cover capital costs that are going to continue.
No, that makes sense. Thank you. Going back real quick, just to follow up and then get to question two. With the incomplete study, what is the reason that the study is incomplete?
So there's a couple of things. We still have that, a water agreement that we need to come with the county. And then the second portion is more of a finance where we are trying to evaluate our assets and build out a capital improvement plan that will affect the rates.
Okay. And point of inquiry, are we allowed to ask for the incomplete study just to read it? I'm tracking it's incomplete, but do we get an opportunity to review it?
That I'm going to have to refer to the Assistant Town Manager.
We can provide that for your eyes.
I really appreciate that. Thank you very much. Okay. And then the second question I have for you, this may seem like a little silly one, but a couple of residents were actually bringing it up today while I was driving home from work. And that was with this additional can fee, what is our, what's our tracking mechanism to figure out which house has one can, two cans, three cans right now today versus when we actually distribute them? Like, I think it's easy when we hand out that extra can to track it. But what's our tracking mechanism today?
So right now, there's a couple of things. So Public Works has been keeping a list where they, when they replace trash can, they record the number and note what it is. So I've used their list. I also use the listing that the town has through their billing system. Because when you, when a resident asks for another trash can, we charge them for the additional cash transfer, do not charge them for the first one. So if they have an additional trash can, I know that we bill for it. So I ran a report on active accounts that have been billed for an additional trash can.
So that makes sense. Let's say, and I just want to throw a hypothetical, it may not be directed towards you, but Public Works, when we get into the public discussion, may be better able to answer this question. But let's say an individual has two trash cans or paid for a second one at some point, and it's destroyed, it's lost, they haven't been using it for a while. They get that first bill, they see the change to it. They come down to town hall, hey, I don't have that second trash can physically on me. I get I requested it a couple of years ago, but it's long gone. What's our mechanism there?
So actually, we're going to send out a communication saying our records show that this resident has an additional trash can.
So the resident does it in this scenario. What's, how do they correct it, I guess, is my question.
They can contact Public Works.
Got it. Okay. So just a.
There will be a communication before this fee is implemented so that residents are aware of what we're doing.
Thank you. I know it seems silly, but they are asking, so I really appreciate that. Thank you.
And any other questions?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Treasurer Larson, you said it was a $4,000 surplus in the water fund? $4,000?
These budgets have changed on me for times. Let's take a look at the water. $8,065 is the surplus.
Okay. And the 3% increase was not done from the, if I'm quoting it incorrectly, correct me, the Baker Tilly's report or study?
No, I did not use that. So previous years, we've always looked, the way we did it is we would set the fee based on our expenses. But the one thing we need to start considering is the depreciation that we put in there to replace our assets, our assets are costing more. So we need to make sure that we have the fee, appropriate level of increases to provide the services that we need, but also continue with the infrastructure that's critical to provide those services.
Okay. So the impact would be if the 3% is not approved by the council, the cost of services would hit the fund balance essentially?
Yeah, it could.
It could, but we don't have.
Because we also have capital. So there's a capital budget in here too, that if anything, so this surplus would go to fund balance. However, we have a capital budget. And let's see what the water's capital is. So in the capital budget, the water fund has $2,379,200 for capital improvements. So majority of that's going to come from fund balance to go for that.
Okay. I think I'm tracking. If not, I'll get it together. With what is, like, are we able to, and I know we're in a budget season for fiscal year '26. Are we able to get, like, what a projection for the next three or four years is going to be? What service fees increase?
So I am working on that. But that is a group effort that I need to work with the departments. And that's part of the reason why we ask for more detail in the budget process so we can forecast out for five years. But that does take time since we have not been doing it.
Okay. Thank you. I have no other questions.
All right. Director Phipps, have you received any additional written statements to be included in the record?
No, Madam Mayor, none have been received.
Okay. We will now proceed to public comment. I have, I do not have a list. Do you have anybody that has signed up to speak?
Madam Mayor, no one has signed up to speak this evening.
Okay. Thank you. Council, last chance, do you have any other questions for the Assistant Town Manager or Town Treasurer?
Yeah, just a point of order. This is, we're talking about the fee right now, right? We still have the other budgets to speak about later. I don't have to get all the questions out right now, right?
Right now, we're just talking about the fee schedule.
Just want to make sure. Okay. You've answered all my questions. Thank you. And then just last, just to close the loop on the study, that's the incomplete study that was referenced. We can have that tomorrow or this week? Okay.
I'll get a tea in the morning.
Okay. Thank you very much. And then.
Ms. Meyer, do you have any further, anything further to add before we conclude this public hearing?
No, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. This concludes the public hearing on the fiscal year 2026 fee schedule. And the town council will hear no further comments or questions on this matter. I would like to keep the record open until 4:00 PM on May 20. Do I have a motion to support that?
Madam Mayor, I'll motion to go for discussion.
To keep the record open until May 20, 4:00 PM?
Yeah, I'll make a motion so we can get to the discussion part. I have a question, or I can ask my question now.
Question on, we've already passed that for the, for, can I ask for additional questions?
You did. After the motion is discussion, right? After somebody seconds it?
Oh, yes.
Okay. All right. Motion.
Do I have a second?
Yeah, I'll second it.
All right. Any discussion?
Yes. So the record is only open until 4:00 PM on May 20. So May 20, when we get to the special meeting, we could have dialogue to edit or add. Okay. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, for clarification, could you restate the motion, please?
Yes. The motion was to keep the record open until, oh, sorry.
Yes, Director Phipps, the motion was to keep the record open until May 20 at 4:00 PM.
The motion was made by Councilman Johnson.
That's correct.
Seconded by.
Councilman McCormick.
Thank you.
I just want to make one note. If any changes happen to this, we will have to put it back out for public comment. And we have to have it adopted 15 days before the beginning of the fiscal year.
Thank you for that.
So just in theory, we make a change on 20th, 15 days after that?
Well.
Right? Because during that 15 days has to be public?
If you make a change to it, then we have to give it, put it out for public comment again. They have to have 15 days from the date published. And then we have to have 15 days to adopt it before it's effective, which would be July 1st.
Okay. And then the must approve by or must sell by date is what again? Is it June 15th, July 15th?
Would be the latest that it has to be adopted. But if you change something, then we have to put it out there for public comment. That means it needs to go back out to the paper. We need to wait 15 days, have the public comment, then do the first reading and adopt it.
Yes. Thank you.
Mr. Town Clerk, could you please do a roll call?
Madam Mayor.
Aye.
Councilman Guttenberg.
Aye.
Councilman McCormick.
Aye.
Councilman Sampson.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson.
Aye.
Thank you very much. I'd like to officially close this public hearing at 6:19 PM. I would now like to open the public hearing on fiscal year 2026 financial plan and budget at 6:19 PM. The procedures will be the same as for the last public hearing. Director Phipps, has the notice of the public hearing been properly advertised?
Yes, Madam Mayor. For the record, this public hearing was advertised in the Southern Maryland newspaper in the April 25, 2025 issue. Certificate of publication is attached to the meeting agenda. Notice that this public hearing was also advertised on the town webpage.
Thank you very much. Will the Assistant Town Manager and Town Treasurer please provide recommendations on behalf of the staff regarding the fiscal year 2026 financial plan and budget?
Madam Mayor and Town Counsel, the general fund, the enterprise fund and the capital fund, we recommend as presented.
Thank you very much. Does council have any questions for the Assistant Town Manager or the Town Treasurer? Go ahead, Councilman Sampson.
Yes, I have quite a few questions. So I ask that you bear with me. All right. And I broke them out by sections to make it easy for you all to respond. So dealing with the general fund, I didn't see any amount charged or billed for legal services. Where are those at?
So those are actually within the department. So most of the legal services are within the administration department. And then there's legal service expenditures allocated to difference, like the police department, legislation, finance. So if you look in here, there's a line item budget. And in the line item, you will see professional legal services.
So when you say professional, because just so I'm clear, for the town attorney services, is that in the budget? Just that? Okay.
Yes. So like on page 21, you look at legislative, it says professional services attorney. And there's a budget amount there, 200. There's not a lot of, or sorry, 20,000. So there's professional services attorney. And under that budget line item is 20,000 under legislative.
Okay. On page four of the general fund document, under revenues, it states that the overall tax revenue is projected to increase. Can you describe what's driving the 78.4% increase at Heritage Green and the 8.7% in real property tax?
So the real property tax increase is mostly to development. We get a report from the state every year. And they tell me what our assessed value is, what the assessed value for new development is. And then they provide us the assessed value, and I multiply that by our tax rate. And then the Heritage Green, that one is the special tax that was part of the 2023 Series Bonds A and B, well, B or A. And that tax is driven by the payments that need to be made against that loan for the Heritage Green property.
Okay. On page 11 of the general fund budget document, it shows two charts that indicate in most years between FY '21 and '25 that actual revenues exceeded routinely the projected revenues for real property income tax. So my question is, if that happens this year, what happens to that excess money?
It goes into fund balance. So if, if the overall general fund as a whole revenue exceeds the expenses, it goes into fund balance. Fund balance is basically like a savings account. And then you can use that fund balance for mostly one-time costs or capital costs. That is in general practice, best practice to do that. So it's, you've got to look at it as a, the general fund as a whole. That means total revenues and total expenses. And anything above that goes into the unassigned fund balance.
Okay. So at the bottom of page 43 on the general fund document, it states the cost of an enhanced pension has been excluded in this budget due to additional analysis and research needed. And I won't finish reading it. But the question I have is a two-part question is, and correct me if I'm wrong. So if I'm wrong, just let me know. So we raised property taxes for the enhanced pension. Is that correct?
So that's, I've heard two versions. I've heard the version that we've raised taxes to cover operating expenses as a whole, which included some enhanced benefits. And then I've heard that we've raised it specifically for pension.
Okay.
But think of it as the property tax should be enough to cover the operations year over year to provide the residents the services that we have. And if we're going to change the services, increase services, decrease services, whatever it is, our tax stream should be able to cover that. But you also have to consider that tax revenue is also going to cover capital. So we also need enough funds to cover our capital.
Okay. So the second part, and that answers my question. Wouldn't it be better whether that money was raised specifically for that or those monies are only partially for that, meaning part of that money? Wouldn't it be better to annotate that in the budget somewhere so that that money is captured? Because I want to see how much money is actually being set aside for that purpose.
So that's kind of difficult to answer because taxes don't, unless there's a specific reason for those taxes, like the special taxing for the Heritage Green, we do not isolate it for a specific purpose. Now, you can say, all right, well, I want a certain amount of money to be in a reserve to cover costs, such as the building reserve. We, and that is normally calculated based on, well, what's the cost to maintain the buildings? Or a vehicle reserve? What's the cost to maintain those vehicles? But you can't say, well, 3% of our tax revenue needs to go in here. There should be some type of, why are we, what's the purpose of that expense? Not the revenue. Because the revenue as a whole, the tax revenue as a whole, is to support all general government services, not just a specific part of it.
So if I'm hearing you correctly, and I'm just making this up, I'm not saying anything else. But if we said, okay, we want to implement the enhanced pension or layoffs or something else, what you're telling me then is that any revenues gained, whether it was intended to be used for that purpose or not, we would have to create a new funding source?
No.
No? Then how, but that doesn't, let me just say this. I don't follow then, if we don't need to create a new revenue source, meaning new, when I say revenue source, raise revenues, I should say. But how do we know that if we don't know what we're tracking on the front end?
Well, you're tracking your expenses, and that's what this budget is for. So say that it's not in this budget. So say next year, you decide, okay, it's going to cost us an additional $1 million to add a pension. Well, if the revenues aren't there from the taxes that are generated, you have two choices. You could, and again, let's just say, the other thing you need to make sure is that you have a long-term plan. Because when you're adding a benefit, that is a long-term. That's not just for a couple of years. That is continuous. So you have to have a long-term plan. That means what you, in 15 years, we need to make sure we have enough revenue to cover it so that you don't want to not raise taxes and then 15 years later have to do a 10% raise. And now the people, you're now not making equitable to the residents based on the times they lived here. But, so to do something like that, you need to make sure that you have the revenue source to cover the costs, and you need to project it for a long-term purpose. So if, say, in this budget, we have a surplus of 300, I think 303,000, something like that. And if we had to put $1 million in here for the pension, then we would have to come up with where are we going to get the remaining amounts? Either it comes from fund balance, which is not in best practice, or we find another revenue source. And the other thing I want to point out is in here, we have revenue coming from investment earnings, which is almost 600,000, which will not exist anymore. It, where our interest is going down. The other thing that's in here is 80-some thousand from ARPA funds that we will no longer have that's been supporting our operating costs. So when you build a budget, we're looking at the budget of, this is our revenues that we have. This is the expense that we're going to use it for. And we create a budget each year. What the town has been lacking is that long-term budget where we need to look at five, 10 years. And the decision that you make now, how are they going to affect in the future? So basically, we, this is the amount of money coming in, and this is how you're going to spend it. Regardless how you're going to spend it, but they're all under the general government activities.
Okay. I understand that. It is frustrating because whether it's for that purpose or a partial. or a partial part of that purpose.
The only time we can really earmark and say that it is restricted is if like we get a federal grant, and it can only be used for that purpose. That means we have no choice, but we can only use it for, say, the speed enforcement or DUI enforcement. We can't use that money for anything else because it is specifically earmarked by the federal government for that. Your general taxes, your tax revenue is not earmarked for a specific activity. You can assign it, but it's not restricted.
Yep. I understand what you're saying. It's frustrating because in the end, what it means that we've looked at increasing revenue for something that we're not doing. And that's basically what it boils down to. But for the sake of time, I will just move on. So on page ten of the enterprise fund document, at the very bottom of that page, it says landfill fees in the licenses slash user fees line items are expected to increase due to continued development. Can you define what you mean by new developments? Is that just existing sites? Or is that actually something new?
No, that's that's Pine Grove. As that grows, we're going to have to continue picking up trash. That means as more trash goes into the landfills, that means we're going to have to pay more fees. There's, as you can see, there were two positions allocated for that increase. And I just want to clarify one thing. No new positions were added. It was an allocation of how the Public Works workforce is being used.
Okay. And so then I have some questions here, and I'll try to go through these real quick for the departments. So the first one is the Finance Department. All right, and I have two for the Finance Department. It says the budget zeroes out in F Y twenty-six, the Grant and Procurement Coordinator, but funds the Procurement and Asset Manager. Why is that? And can you describe the funding difference between the two?
Oh, well, there's really not funding difference. It's just how I've used the position. So we had a grant and procurement, which we found it was more in procurement and asset where we needed that support. So we just kind of revised the position. So any grant applications I'm now doing, and the position that was there, the Grant and Procurement Coordinator is now an asset, a procurement and asset manager.
Okay. And then the second question for the Finance Department, the budget zeroes out the Account Clerk to slash utility billing supervisor. So who picks up those duties?
Well, based on what we need in the department, I've revised the job description and changed it from a billing supervisor to a billing coordinator.
Is there any difference in the funding for that position then?
Well, no, there, I mean, it's, it was the same. It's actually lower than the previous position cost.
Okay. So for the Police Department, I was just curious as to, what is the reason for the reduction of the PFC position from eight to seven between F Y twenty-four? And that would also include the two admin assistants. Why not just request those and keep those?
That is a question you'd have to ask them. This is, so this budget is put together based on the department's requests.
That's why I'm asking.
Yeah. So I can't, I can't answer why they decided to rearrange.
No, I'm asking, I'm asking now, the Police Department.
Wow.
That's why I'm asking. I'm asking. I mean, I think they'd want to.
Answer that question, please.
So I'm working on a reorganization of our organizational chart as it is anyways. Typically, why that position would go down from eight to seven would probably be because of a promotion. Upper mobility of the PFC officer slot basically is all of our, you know, entry-level officers and somebody with, you know, three or less years on at this point. Right now, we're sitting, I think we're one under our allotment, but we still have people that need to go to academies and stuff like that, so.
Okay, and the two admin position, admin assistant, do you need them?
So we do. Right now, we have reclassified those positions, one as an evidence technician and property technician, just because we have sworn officers taking a lot of their time doing that stuff where we're taking in a lot of property, we have to take drugs up to state police headquarters and get tested and things of that nature and processing those kind of things. And then the other one is a training coordinator. Our agency prides itself on training its officers up very well. And in order to keep that flowing freely and not having the chief or command staff constantly spending so much time working on the training, that's why we've created that position. They kind of tag-team the administrative duties between the two of them, as well as our compliance coordinator. But those are also things that I plan on looking at within the organizational chart, just to better describe what those positions entail.
Okay, so I know, you know, where we're at in the budget process, it's kind of late to make any changes, but that's good to know. So you do need the admin assistants, and you need the other two people.
Absolutely.
Which is me. Okay, I just wanted to make sure I understand. Thank you.
Thank you.
For Public Works. I did not understand the staffing levels. And when I say I don't understand the staffing levels, I see a bunch of like point three, point five, point this. So my question is, is that based on man hours worked? Or is that a man hours work equalling F T Es? Or is it straight F T Es? Is it part-time contract? Because I'm trying to figure out, how did you get the total number?
It's an allocation. So we budget based on where they're going to allocate the Public Works employees. And Public Works has a lot of departments. They have their administration, they have streets, they have parks, they have facilities, they have fleet maintenance, they have all of the enterprise funds. So instead of just charging one department, which wouldn't allocate the expenses appropriately based on how those employees are being used, that's why you see the point on there, because those employees are being allocated to do those duties within those departments, instead of putting like one hundred percent to water when this employee might be split between water and sewer.
Okay, and how does that work from a budgetary standpoint, as far as figuring out cost?
So the Public Works Department has a list of all their employees, all the positions, any vacant positions. They then say this position will be allocated, say, twenty percent to parks, fifty percent to water, fifty percent sewer, and thirty percent stormwater. So now I know that allocation. So that employee's salary, benefits, taxes, all of those things are then allocated to those different departments, so that we capture that expense. And those, it's budgeted based on the expense, because also on payroll side, we have it allocated based on what the budget is.
Okay, and I don't know if this fits into the Public Works. If it doesn't, you can just let me know. The Baker-Tilly study, I've had several people ask about that and request that. Is that something that we can get?
That's.
Well, we're getting that.
Is that the incomplete water study?
Yes, that's Baker-Tilly's study.
Okay, thanks. On the cap, I got just a few more questions, capital fund questions. So where it states the year has the estimated time of completion. So for example, the Dorchester Community Center shows twenty twenty-eight. Some of them show twenty twenty-six. Does that mean the actual project will be done, or is that the projected date to be done?
That's projected. You can't say it's definitely going to be done, but that's the projected fiscal year.
Okay, where it shows the funding source, and specifically where it shows we have a pending state grant. And it may have in there, we secured a grant, then we got a pending state grant for the same thing.
Actually, I, this needs to update. I was just informed yesterday that we have both of these grants. So they're no longer, the ones no longer paying, pending, both have been secured. In addition, the five hundred thousand for the Dorchester also has been secured. It's no longer pending.
Right. But my question is, just in general, where it says pending, okay. Is though, are those items that we're actually saying is a part of the budget? In other words, are we actually counting on it, even though it's pending, or is it just?
Correct. We are council. So say, just theoretically, say we did not get any of the funding for the Dorchester Community Center, and we would have to fund it completely from general fund, then it would be up to the council to determine, do we still want to do this project?
Okay, and the last question I have is for those things, like the Dorchester Community Center, like the amphitheater and the bike trail, where it says budget impact in the last column on that sheet. So once those state grants are expended, do, have we come up with an additional funding source to maintain? Or is that just raising revenues?
We would have to use our general operating to maintain it.
So that means we have to raise revenue?
Well, it's, it's basically saying some of these, most of these, there's not a significant impact. But we would have to, if we wanted to maintain that asset after investing so much in it, we would have to make sure we budget enough to maintain it.
Okay. So, all right, so that answered my question. We've got to raise the revenue to cover that cost, or pull it from somewhere else.
Something else, or say that as development comes in, the revenues are being able to subsidize these costs. Each year, you're going to do a new budget, and you're going to have to determine this is what our projected revenues are, and this is how we want to spend it.
Okay, that's all the questions I have. Thank you for your patience.
Right. Councilman Guttenberg, do you have questions?
I do. I have, I have just one kind of very broad question, right? So related to in the general fund, the two largest sources of revenue are property taxes and the Heritage Green tax, right?
Do not count Heritage Green because Heritage Green is restricted. It is to pay the debt.
Yes, and, okay, good. So and that is, yeah, I understand that, and that's actually part of the question. So with that, that is for the the bond repayment, correct?
Correct.
Right. So with those two sources, though, being our single largest source of revenue that that support those that that general fund for in those two categories, how do we track the risk of, and what would be the indicators, and how soon would we get indicators if, for instance, economic conditions drastically or more significantly anticipate slow down what's happening in the building of new homes in there, or the property values in the town drop? How would we know that?
So that is a concern. Well, we had, we just had the assessments done last year, so that will be for another two years. But if development slows, we're going to have to account for that in the next budget. So what, the number that, the amount that I have calculated is based on the state report, which includes permits that have already been submitted. So that's in there. So if there's, say, permits drop, you're, the assessment shouldn't drop because those have already been there, but the increase of the property tax revenue may decrease. It might not be eight percent, it might be four percent next year. But I won't know that until I start seeing that activity.
So are all the properties in the town on the same two-year cycle for reevaluation, or is it staggered?
It's three years, and for the most part, it is all the same. I think there's a very few, like four or five that are not.
Okay, just, just for everyone's edification, then where are we in that cycle? It was just a year ago, you said?
Yeah.
Or just this year? Okay.
Yeah. So last year, F Y twenty-five was our assessment. So the same assessment, again, it does increase because there's there's a limit they can increase the assessment. So say the assessment in F Y twenty-five went up thirty percent, well, they can only do a seven percent increase. So then that is staggered in
Sure.
over the time.
Okay, so just so I can say back to make sure I understand, what I'm hearing you say is that really the risk to property values impacting the the budget in the near term is pretty low. The better indicator of a potential issue, and it's, I think Heritage Green is somewhere just over a million dollars of revenue towards repayment specifically of bonds, that that we would see some indicators if there were economic conditions that slowed down building, no?
No.
Okay.
That Heritage Green, that amount that's taxed, that special tax is going to always be the same. It's to repay the bonds. It's our regular real property tax revenue that could change. So we did it in F Y twenty-five, so it'd be good in twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-seven. So twenty-eight is when there, if there's something, if there's an economic turn and housing values go down, then we could see the revenues pretty much being stagnant. And we, there would be a worry that our expenses may exceed our revenue.
So is the Heritage Green number that we see in the budget, is that based on the known permitted buildings that are going in and the revenue we expect to see from those, not things that haven't been built yet?
So the Heritage Green number, that is the special tax on the property. So if the property hasn't been sold, the developer's paying that tax. If the property has been sold, the resident's paying that tax.
Now I understand. Thank you. Yeah, I appreciate it. Okay, so it sounds like we're, that is not a huge concern, a risk factor is.
Is, gotcha. Pretty much, the revenues are supporting the bond cost. That's the only thing it's supporting.
Okay.
What you need to look at for revenue to support your general operations is the real property tax revenue. Basically, we have the Heritage Green in there is because we have to report it that way.
Sure.
But it has no bearing on, it's not going to increase anything.
Thank you. That was really helpful. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Councilman McCormick?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. And thank you for putting this together. Just an admin question upfront, and then I'll go through very similar how Councilman Sampson, I got a couple of questions here. So admin-wise, same question I asked earlier. Did you consult a third-party consulting agency? Do we do this internally? How did we determine the line items for F Y twenty-six budget?
You mean?
Yep, did we go to each department head and ask them, hey, I want specific answers? Do we go third-party? How do we do it?
We do it internally. So basically, the budget process is, we develop these worksheets. And these worksheets, they have pretty much most of the information you have on here. So we provide the last three fiscal years actuals. We provide the budget. We provide the year-to-date, what's expenses been year-to-date. Then I will go in and do projections, mostly for salaries and stuff like that, because I pretty much know what it's going to be. So the departments get these worksheets, and in these worksheets, all the salaries are going to be filled in. I do that.
Sure.
Any position request would go to H R to discuss what the departments and what their requests are. Departments are to fill in their operating expenses, which are any contracted services, any supplies and materials, any traveling. And in these worksheets, they, for anything over five thousand, they are to list out what sir, contract services they are using, how much it's going to cost, what the purpose is for. And that feeds into these worksheets, which are the line items that you see here. And the same thing with trainings. They list out all the trainings they're going to do, how many employees are going to it, where it's going to be, and that then filters into here. Then the small capital is again, another worksheet where they list, well, what do they need? If they need a new piece of equipment or something like that, they will list what it is and how much it's going to cost. And again, those feed into these worksheets that provide you this information, line-by-line item.
No, thank you for that. And that's for edification purposes. So the department heads and you work together to figure out the budget for that individual department. Let's say, and I'm not saying that Director Phipps would do this, but just to use legislative exam, as as an example, they budget a hundred K, they spend a hundred and twenty K, they miss projection by twenty percent. What happens then? Just like I know, we can amend the budget, does that department head have to come to you and say, hey, I'm going to miss this projection by twenty percent?
So anything that's, they should, theoretically, they should have planned this out, but there are some unplanned things, and they have come up to the council, like we had for I T, we needed to increase our cybersecurity, and that was going to cost thirty thousand more. So we came back to, came to the council and said, hey, we're going to need this contract to for cybersecurity, and it will be mentioned there. This was not budgeted, and there will be a budget amendment for it.
Okay, now, just to make sure, because I want to read it back to you. Department head, hey, we didn't budget for this, something extraneous happened, we need additional thirty K for I T services, thanks for using that example. They come to the town council. Town council says, yes, my assumption will be no problem, assuming we have a surplus, which we do, of roughly three hundred and sixty K. Let's say we have a perfectly balanced budget, or heaven forbid, our budget is not balanced, and there's an additional ask for thirty K. What happens in that scenario?
So the department either is going to have to ask for it, and it comes from fund balance. If this is not a reoccurring cost, then the council can determine, do we want to use fund balance for this cost? But it is really up to the departments. They have asked for this budget. They are responsible for monitoring this budget.
I totally agree. Thank you very much for saying that. Okay, four questions from residents and a couple of questions from me. First question from a resident concerned resident states, there's an eighteen K charge in the admin portion for gym memberships. Can you talk through what that is? Is that for the police department specifically, or every town employee? What does that mean?
I'm going to refer to H R on that.
Okay.
Thank you, Councilman McCormick. That eighteen thousand was an additional fund that we added this year as an initiative to try to, initially, it came out of a request from the police department to have an internal gym.
Yes.
And we, we had met with our risk compliance vendors, and they said that wasn't really something that our insurance covers. So we said, all right, well, let's, we still want to provide this service for them. And as we got to talking and brainstorming, we decided that, why don't we just offer this to all employees as part of my health and wellness initiative? So we have corporate rates with three of the local La Plata gyms. And they have agreed to give our employees and their spouses the discount. And if you approve my budget as requested, um, we will be providing a reimbursement on a quarterly basis to the staff that do participate.
Okay. So it's, it's three local gyms. You can get a reimbursement as long as you're a town employee. So let me ask a couple of examples. So, first example, any police officer is eligible for this. Second would be anybody in public works is eligible for this. Anybody on this dais is eligible, eligible for it?
You will be eligible for the discount, but not the reimbursement.
Okay. Um, if we were to go department by department, for example, and again, I've, I have no idea what my opinion is on this yet, but from a legal standpoint, I don't know if our town attorney is on, could we offer this benefit to one department and not the others? Meaning if I wanted to offer this to, just to use an example, the police force makes sense to me, public works makes sense to me, physically demanding jobs. For us up here, probably don't need the discount, right? Some other folks probably don't need the discount. Would we have a legal ability to do that or is it just a one-size-fits-all?
So I, I try not to use legal and not legal in HR.
Sure. Yep.
Compliant or non-compliant, and I do look at HR best practices. And for a health and wellness benefit, um, I would, I would argue that somebody who sits in a chair stagnant all day also has a need to.
Totally. I guess you can see an example to see if you could do one department and not another.
So I mean, could you? Yes. Should you know? But one of the things we did this year with the addition of a health and wellness program of gym memberships is I was able to negotiate with our broker and CareFirst has given us a two thousand dollar, um, wellness discount on our health premium.
Sure.
Um, and our, also it kept us from having an increase in our premiums.
Thank you. And again, I'm just doing due diligence. I'm not saying.
Yeah, no, there's tons of benefits for making it for everybody. And we wouldn't have that same negotiating power.
No, I appreciate that. Thank you very much. Um, second question's for public works. So I'm not sure, uh, if, if public works, uh, wants to come up or not, or perhaps you can even answer this. The second question from a resident was, there's a two-point eight K line item allocation for general ops travel in the public works budget. Um, but there was zero in twenty twenty-three, zero in twenty twenty-four. What does that general ops travel mean in that, that line item?
That would be probably for training. We are trying to get more employees to training, even, uh, finance is trying to get employees to take more trainings to help develop their skills. And that has been a focus within every department.
No, thank you for that. Okay. So just a clear, uh, again, clarification, two-point eight K there is training certifications, whatever public works needs to do their job. Okay. That makes sense. Uh, there was a question that I got from a resident today on, does the town have an in-house mechanic, a contracted mechanic, or do we use a third-party?
So we actually have the position, but it's vacant. I believe they are looking for, um, that position.
So the position exists, it's just vacant and we're doing a job search. Okay. Just off the top of your head, you may or may not know. Do we know where we're at in the job search by any chance? And that's okay if we don't. Okay. Early on? Perfect. Thank you. The final question, uh, sorry, Director Kenny, I may need you again. I think you may have been the person to do this lead. I don't know. Uh, so a concerned resident asked about, listen, we see a three hundred and sixty K surplus. We understand last year that the town council voted for an enhanced pension program with police and public works combined. We have thankfully had the last town council split that. Now we kind of have a fresh slate to do this. Um, what has communication been with the town of La Plata regarding the enhanced pension program strictly for police? And have we had any open communication with LEOPS, industry standards, other municipalities and what they've kind of done?
I will look to, um, HR on this.
Sure.
I have, I've personally done some, I'm working on a worksheet, looking at other municipalities, what their expenses are for benefits compared to their over, but I'm in much very.
Sure, sure. Yeah. Yeah. No, I appreciate that. And I think Director Kenny, you were the lead on this last year, right?
That is correct.
Okay. So, um, so just again, the, the same question to restate it, uh, we had a concerned resident asking, we understand that the pension program last year was pitched to have police and public works together. We've now s- split that for all intents and purposes. We have a blank slate to kind of relook at the pension program with a three hundred and sixty-three K surplus. The concern there is, does that surplus cover potential pension? What communication and what info do we have at this time?
So where, where we're at now is, um, really going to be at what the appetite is with this council and, and how we proceed. Um, I have done a lot of research in LEOPS since, um, I heard you guys campaigning about it and there's been some questions. Um, the process takes at least ten months.
Yes.
And the state law requires us to have a hundred percent service credit purchase for all twenty-eight members that are going to participate, um, based on current staffing levels. So we would have to fund upfront all of those. I have, um, to start the process, we'd have to submit an application with a seventy-five hundred dollar, seven, I'm sorry, seven thousand, three hundred and five dollar valuation fee, whether we're in the program or not. They will tell us how much it's going to cost us to buy into the program and to fund it. And then we'll be responsible for paying that sum along with another seven thousand five hundred, I'm sorry, seven thousand, three hundred and five dollar post valuation. Um, once it's been enacted, um, assuming that we participate and we elect to go into that, um, to make sure that those numbers still jive.
When you did the first round of communication, I understand we didn't, or let me ask actually, because I don't know. I'm assuming we did not pay that seven point three K because we, we didn't move forward with the, I guess you would say like finding, for lack of a better term? Like them coming in and basically assigning credits and liabilities and then figuring out the price?
No, we, we haven't, um, when we, when the previous council said they were not, um, going to move forward with that, we did not put that cost into, uh, unless it's, yeah, I think we took all of those costs out of the budget.
Yes. Yep. And that's why we have that three hundred, basically three hundred and sixty K surplus, correct?
Yes. And there has been no further conversation about how we're going to move forward, um, with the public works. But, um, I know the prevailing thought, um, and ask from that department is that they get a matching four fifty-seven.
Okay. So, and public works, you know, obviously we'll get an opportunity to speak to them hopefully at a working session even today. But just to make sure I have it correct, public works has stated they want a four fifty-seven match program or something similar to that, right? The police force and Chief Norris, I know you're here, uh, is the, is the police force requesting LEOPS or a police industry standard pension program? So not the same thing public works wants, correct?
That is correct. They would be separate.
Okay. Just one second. I'm going to take a note and then I got a couple more questions. Okay. Thank you for that. Final thing, um, and I'm not trying to overstep here just out of pure edification and curiosity. Can we get a copy of the communication that the town has had with LEOPS just to see what pricing would look like, all that stuff? Or do we have to reopen that now that there's a new council? Like let's, and again, I'm not speaking for the council, but let's say we move forward with that action plan. Hey, we're interested in what LEOPS would cost the town. We go through all the proper channels. We vote on it. Like, do we get an opportunity to see that communication? Or is that something that just HR, finance, you guys kind of do and then?
That's part of our operating.
Perfect.
Right. And then we would just, when we have those numbers, we would present them to council.
Okay, great. And then again, timelines typically anywhere from ten to twelve months, the entire process.
So the earliest that we can submit our application for LEOPS and pay that initial fee would be first of September. And then I will, um, over the next month or two, the process is that, um, I collect census data of our staff, including years of service and ranks and salaries and all that. I submit that to, um, the Maryland state pension. And then they, um, they will take it to their actuaries, find out how much it's going to cost us. And so then they would expect, I believe, I'm trying to do this without my notes.
Sure.
Sometime January or February, um, would be when they would come up with us with the number. We would have to get a vote from the police staff to, um, say that yes, they want to move forward with that. We would have to enact legislation here at the town level to, um, to add it to our services. Um, and then we would, um, from there, then we would buy into it for a July one, twenty twenty-six effective date.
Okay. And that's assuming everything goes. Okay. Uh, final question on this topic specifically, then I'll move on to another one. I heard a couple of times throughout the examples, a million dollars. Are we just pulling that as an example or is that? Okay. I didn't know if that was something. Okay. Perfect. Okay. Thank you very much. Uh, thank you. No, I appreciate that on the LEOPS. Okay. Uh, just covering down on, uh, Councilman Sampson's question earlier, Baker Tilly report is the thing that we're talking about with the water. It's incomplete, but we're going to get a copy of that tomorrow. So I appreciate that. Going to page four real quick. I see the expected revenue roughly thirteen point six million. The expected expenditure is thirteen point three million. That's where that three hundred and sixty K surplus number is coming from, correct?
Um, it's, yeah, it's a three hundred and thirty thousand.
Okay, three hundred and thirty thousand. Okay. Thank you for that correction. In theory, that three, that three hundred?
Sorry, that's a decrease from the previous year. The actual one, we can go look at the financials of what the surplus is going to be. So on page seventeen, the surplus is actually three hundred and two thousand, six hundred and twenty.
Okay. So we have a three hundred and two thousand, six hundred and twenty dollar surplus. If we do nothing new, let's say we accept this in its current form, that three hundred and two thousand dollars goes into the fund balance, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
But you also have a capital budget that is going to pull all from fund balance.
Okay.
So if you look at your capital budget and what's going to be from fund balance for the general fund.
And that's if we accept it as is, correct?
Yeah. That's if we accept it as is. Um, so there is, um, the unassigned fund balance would be eight hundred and sixty-one thousand, two hundred and fifty.
And just for my edification, what page are you pulling that from?
This is on the capital budget.
Yep.
Page four.
Four. Okay. Thank you. Okay. And then again, for my edification, where am I looking on here?
Okay. So, um, on page four, you see the general fund capital budget.
I do.
You'll see financing sources, grants and other funding. That would be all the, um, grants we anticipate, um, receiving.
Yeah.
Then you have fund balance. There's that eight sixty-one, two fifty from the unassigned fund balance. And then we have three hundred and ninety-nine thousand, nine hundred and seventy from the project reserve fund balance.
Got it. Okay. Thank you. Uh, for edification purposes, the fund balance, is it just money under a mattress? Is it into a, I don't know, you know, mutual fund?
It's an allocation on our, um, in our general ledger. Now, if you're talking about actual monies where those are located, we have some in a bank account, but most of them are invested in CDs and mutual funds like that.
Thank you very much. Okay. Uh, moving on to the general government expenditures. So I see a two and a half percent increase year over year. Um, I know that the finance committee made a recommendation to remove the ninety K land use study, land grant study, whatever it's called, whatever we're calling it. Is that the driver for that or no?
Actually, that is in here.
Yes.
The other council requested that we keep.
I understand what I'm, what I'm saying is, I see a two and a half percent increase in government expenditures. Is that driven by that land use study remaining in there?
Um, yes.
Okay.
Partially, yes. Um, there's a couple of things, um, like elections, we're not going to have it. So that decreased some, um, postage and delivery, we now, we can tell what departments, how much they use with our, um, postage machine. So we allocate those out. So that's no longer being thrown under the general services. And then yes, the, um, adding that back in.
Yeah. So again, just.
For a one-time cost.
Yes, but for edification purposes, we're seeing the increase there despite two out of three things moving in the, what I would say, right direction. It's the land you study. That's the driver for that. Okay. And then again, I'm not saying it's good or bad. I'm just asking the question. Okay. Public safety, I see a four point eight percent decrease in year-over-year expenditure. Is that correct?
That, yes. And that's because we've eliminated the, um, pension.
Okay. So, so that was the driver for it. Okay.
We, it's not in FY twenty-six. So yes, that's the main, that's.
So would I, would I have it correct stating this? Let me know if I'm right or wrong. Um, that a enhanced pension program is roughly five percent of the current public safety budget.
So, well.
And I know it's a tough one to answer right now.
I put that number in based on the data we have.
Sure.
As we research and learn more, we found it's going to be significantly more than what we had originally projected.
So it'd be more just off the info we have than five percent. Okay. So essentially the twenty twenty-five budget under projected what it would have cost to do it.
We had implemented it.
Got it. Okay. Um, sounds good. The three hundred and sixty, three hundred and thirty thousand dollar surplus, excuse me. Let's say we find just for an ideal world, LEOPS costs three hundred and thirty thousand dollars for a long-term, perfect. Could we use that surplus for that?
Well, basically that is what you were saying, these are the revenues and these are how we're going to do it. So yes.
Correct.
Or the departments put in their requests and say, this is how we want, this is what we need to do our operations. And if it's a, if it's not in a, from specific activity that has a specific revenue.
Then it can go there, right?
The general, your general taxes cover your general revenue, real property taxes, your income taxes, all that covers your general government operating.
Thank you. Two final questions. They're capital budget specific if we want to go over there. Uh, so first, just getting into the Dorchester Community Center real quick. You may or may not know the answer, but let's do dollars and cents first, then we can talk about community impact second. Let's say, I'm not speaking for the council, it's a hypothetical, we decide to remove the Dorchester Community Center. We decide we don't want to move forward with it. What would be the monetary impact to the town?
Well, you just secured five hundred thousand grant. You.
And you have to hand it back, right?
You, we would not be able to use it because it's specifically for that purpose.
Would it go back to the state? Would it stay with us?
So we don't receive it.
Okay.
We don't receive it until
Until you build.
we report the activity.
Okay. And again, that's roughly five hundred K plus or minus a couple, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, we have, so we have two other grants sitting out there for that.
Okay.
That still haven't gone through the whole process yet.
I understand this is a budget hearing, but this question does pertain to the budget itself. If we moved in that direction, what would be the impact to the community here? Meaning, I know we talk about a long-term plan. The Dorchester Community Center clearly fits into that. There's probably some sort of maintenance fee or upkeep fee. Would that fall off the books? Is that covered by future grants, this grant itself? What would happen there?
To be honest, there has not been any really discussion about this.
Okay.
So with the five hundred K that you, that has been, um, awarded to the town, you will have to figure out how you want to spend it, what you're going to use it for, how you're going to operate this, um, building, what's purpose? That is all of that planning stage that has not been done or has not been communicated to me. And you have five hundred thousand to do a study, to do a design, to know what you're going to use it for.
Got it.
What is going to be the long-term, um, cost? That's going to be need to know, but it will be based on how are we going to use that for operations?
Sure.
Will it change in five, ten years? I don't know.
Got it. And then edification purposes, because I've actually heard people ask this and you bring up a good point. Let's say it costs us three hundred K. Do we save that two hundred K? Does that go back to the state? Do we only get three hundred K?
For the purpose that it was, um.
It's not ours. So just for the record, there's no way we can save this money, get it into our budget, anything like that.
I did not request that. It's a drawdown.
Perfect.
For me to request it, we have to have an expense that fits into that grant requirement.
Perfect. And again, I'm asking for edification purposes. I appreciate that being on the record. Final question for you, I promise, for this part of the discussion. Uh, removing the land use study, that ninety K would go back to us, correct? Let's say we moved in that direction.
Well, it would, it would be in the general fund. And if, say at the end of the year, we had ninety thousand dollars left after revenue minus expenses, that would then go into the unassigned general fund balance.
What? So the general, or excuse me, I apologize, the land use study obviously has a long-term impact. Do we have an expectation for a potential dollar amount, anything like that? I know that we went third-party, if I'm not mistaken, uh, that requested it and it's, I've seen it's been on the books, I think twenty-four, twenty-three, right? Um, any reason why we didn't do it in twenty-three, twenty-four?
It just wasn't one of those projects that the planning director, um, took on.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you so much. And I really appreciate your time. Thank you, Director Kennedy, and thank you, everybody that answered the questions. Appreciate it.
Yes, Madam Mayor. Thank you. First, thank you for being with us. This is obviously our first medium question. So first question is to Ms. Minor. Um, and this is just a process question. So with the charter and section eight, the budget adoption, it says we shall hold a public hearing. That's tonight. And then it goes on to say the council may insert or may increase or decrease items in the budget. Is there a code that requires us to go back to public hearing once we make a decision? Cause the public hearing is to get hypothetically public climate on the pros or cons of that. So we hear negative or we really want something. If we say yes to it or no to it, we have to go back to the public hearing again because we added or added an item?
Well, the public, you've changed the budget now. So now the budget either decreased, increased, whatever. And now it's not the same that the budget, whatever you did now is different from what the public would originally.
No, I got that. But if the public came in here and rooted for, I don't know, a, a, a six percent merit increase for every town staff and we pit that in the budget, we have to go back to public hearing for that process?
Citizen, um, didn't want that and you guys added that in.
Well, it's hypothetical. I'm just asking for the process.
Where you guys start adding things and, because you're supposed to communicate with the public, knowing what the community wants and make sure that we are doing, providing those services. So the other council had gone through the budget and this is what they had said, what they wanted the budget to look like. So if you guys start changing things, we do need to give the public an opportunity to go over it.
I just want to make sure that is the true process and that was being interpreted.
It's never happened before.
Okay.
But it would be unfair to make a change and then not give the public an opportunity to comment on that change.
So what's the difference between doing a budget amendment throughout the year and not allowing them?
So budget amendment at the end of the year is to.
No, throughout the year for anything that comes before the council.
We do them throughout the year.
Okay.
So, um, there may be a budget amendment said because, um, So, um, there may be a budget amendment said because, um, cost is increasing, but we're not adopting the budget as a whole. So that normally has not gone to public comment or anything, because this is normally because something has already happened. Or an event has occurred that we were not anticipating. This budget is our plan, and we want the public to comment on how we plan to use their funds. But there's always a, um, unexpected expense that may come up. Again, like the cybersecurity, that was a risk that we need to assess and make sure that we have the appropriate, um, what was it, programming or coverage so that we aren't hacked or anything. You, so in my last, um, monthly report, there's a listing of, um, budget amendments that are going to happen. Um, I know there's one for the C cameras, because that was an up and going when we had the budget prepared last year. Well, we have a revenue and expense that we need to account for. Um, there is also for the heritage green. Again, I took based on the report, but we had a escrow that covered part of the tax, or not the tax, but the, um, interest payment, so I need to account for that. Um, we have the thirty thousand for the IT. Um, I'm trying to think there were some of those, but there's a whole list in my last monthly report.
Amendments once a year, and that's.
Typically at the end of the year, but we monitor that budget as we go. Every, every month, you will get a report which shows you where we're at on the budget.
Okay.
And it will also, I will also make note if something has come up that was unexpected.
Okay, all right, thank you. Uh, well, I will hope that, you know, eventually, this is obviously to your point, a budget that we inherited, that we will have what, um, has been done in the past, from my understanding, is a budget retreat. Um, that could be a conversation when the town manager arrives, as does the council for next year. Director Kennedy, you don't have to come up. If we can just understand what your health and wellness plan is, maybe send it to us, uh, in the email, if that's okay, Ms. Minor?
Certainly.
And this is for Ms. Minor, Director Kennedy, or Treasurer Larson. What is the current participation in the four fifty-seven program? Like, is it, uh, something that our employees, uh, the town staff actively participate in or no?
It's about fifty percent, but bear in mind, there is no matching. So there is really, unless they are proactive in their retirement, there's really no incentive for them to do it. They, I mean, employees could be doing a Roth IRA because that may be more beneficial than, because there's no matching. So right now, it's fifty percent.
Okay, thank you. Um, Ms. Minor, is there any reason why a merit increase was not included in this budget, or the last council didn't incline to do a merit increase?
Um, it didn't do it very. It wasn't requested, and when we presented the budget, the original budget, um, there was, we were already in a deficit. So, and I had brought that up to the previous council, hey, there has not been a merit increase for, I think we're going on a third year. I had brought that up, and there was no interest in adding that.
So.
Sorry, I want to just make one point that I've, last year, the FY twenty-five budget, the COLA was actually decreased. We used the same formula for the COLA for employees, and they decreased the COLA, um, last year for employees.
Okay, they, I'm assuming it being the council?
Yes.
Okay. Um, what would be the, and obviously, it wasn't in the budget, so maybe didn't run the numbers, what would be the impact for a merit increase? And would it be some, who will request a merit increase, the council or department heads?
It really should come from the town manager.
Okay.
Because the departments can request positions, but they don't dictate salaries or anything like that.
Okay.
A merit increase should be done based on what the town manager recommends and based on where we're at the budget. So if we have a surplus, we could look at and say, okay, we can afford to do a merit increase. If we're in a deficit, which was, had been the last few years, there hasn't been one.
So that's the reason for, one, there was no request, and then it's a deficit.
But council typically would not, that is not something that the council would put in. It would come from the town manager.
Okay. Um. On to the capital budget, please. The Dorchester Community Center. So the grant was secured from the state. The town will front the money, build a state later for what was done, correct?
Just.
The five hundred thousand?
Curved five hundred thousand. There's still seven hundred and fifty thousand out there.
When I look at the website, I see a board of directors, and I see various names, and I see a prior staff member from the town listed on there. Who currently runs the Dorchester Community Center, if it's even up and running?
Again, this is a project that has been out. I, I look at the financial points, who manages it? That's an administration, and I can't answer that.
Ms. Minor?
Staff member, it, it is not up and running right now. The board does not exist any longer.
So is it, what is the worthwhile for the town advocating for this organization?
Well.
Just for thought process, like what is the, why are we?
For the, for the community, for the.
Who's going to run it? Or that's just stuff we don't, I mean, honestly speaking, do we have it figured out?
Stuff that, yeah. This is, and I, I, I hate to.
Just one more time, Director Treasurer Larson, sorry, and I'll let you go. For the grant that was just secured, the half a million or so, is there expiration on that grant? Do it has to be used by this calendar year?
I think it's four years.
So it's within four years. So hypothetically, if the organization's like, okay, the town got this half a million dollars, they might want to form their board of directors and get moving? If not, they lose the grant again, or?
If you don't use the grant, then you can't request money. It's, it's a drawdown.
Okay.
So we have to have the expense, and the expense has to be the purpose for the Dorchester community, because that was what the grant is for. If we don't use it, then we never draw down on it.
Right, I understand that part, yeah.
Um, but this is one of those things that the town needs to start being proactive on evaluating. They need to have a clear understanding before putting these in the capital improvement plan. There should be analysis on, what does the community want? What's the impact to the community? How are we going to measure it? There, all of this should be, and this is one of the things that finance department is trying to work with departments to start saying, you need to start evaluating what you're putting out there. Where's the data coming from? How are you analyzing that data? What are you going to be your measures on? What's your expected outcome? How are you going to measure that outcome? We've, we've started slow with this budget by at least getting a listing of what, what do your contractors and your materials apply? What is, what is in that number? Now we need to start evaluating that.
So you have a strategic plan or vision?
We need that.
I agree. Uh, Ms. Minor, the administration, I'm assuming that's you right now, correct? Your department as assistant town manager? Okay. Uh, Director to Madam Mayor, what is the plan, or either one of you, because you're in operations? Once we get this half a million dollars, what, what are we going to start doing? Do we know what we want to start doing, or we don't?
This was a initiative by our former chief eight years ago. Um, I personally have secured two hundred and fifty thousand dollars back, uh, seven years ago. I went up there again, five hundred thousand, and I did another five hundred thousand. It was lack of initiative on a, uh, in operations here, it was not a mayor's job. I just happened to be, uh, with the right people at the right time that we could request that. Uh, they have a three million dollar request for a building that the, when the, uh, Dorchester Community Center was functioning. Their request was bigger than our paycheck, the paycheck that we had of one point two five million, and we could go up to maybe one point five million. And they weren't willing to come down, and then the board lost interest and, uh, has essentially, um, been disbanded. Um, I know former councilwoman, uh, Bryant Ward did get it back in good standing, so there is good standing, but they do not have a functioning board. So the process for us to do, if this is an interest of this board, is to reinvigorate that and to get the bylaws. I know, uh, Councilwoman Bryant Ward was working on the bylaws. I don't know where that went.
I've never seen them, so I don't know if she has completed them or not.
Okay.
And so there is an interest, there's the money, um, but as, uh, um, Ms. Minor said, there is not a board right now to carry it up. We're only, that money is only capital, uh, and for us, so a building. Now, how are you going to run operations? That's the step that this council needs to see. And I would hate to, um, because we went begging again to make sure that that was reinstated, and we still have seven hundred and fifty thousand out there that we have requested. Um, I would hate to have to throw that back in. Um, but this is where this council can sit down and talk about the need. I know the police have said that there is a need, especially in that area. Um, those kiddos, a lot of them are latchkey. And, um, they need a place, they need a mentor, and that's why the chief had that vision, is to make sure that there was a safe place for these kids to, uh, go after school. So that's where that came from.
Okay, so if I may, thank you for the explanation, Madam Mayor. If I may, we have a work session on the twentieth, I believe, or a special meeting regarding the budget. Can we try to get as much information as possible to the council on, I understand this is capital, so ideally, the money we use for a facility. What is the operation plans? Have Councilwoman Bryant Ward started the bylaws, or have they started meeting? Because if she got them back in good standard, they had to do an annual report, so they would have had to have some type of meeting as a nonprofit organization. So just as much information as possible, uh, because I don't understand what it is, just from these, I understand the vision from what you just explained, Madam Mayor, but I think it's more if we want to invest right now, as we know, at a half a million dollars into a program, while it is grant funds, it's still funds on behalf of the council. Um, the second question, the land use study for Town Hall area, and hearsay is not appropriate, but I talked to Councilman Jenkins, and his understanding was it was for total town-owned property. Here in the capital budget, it says Town Hall and Public Works Facility.
Yeah, Public Works is part of the town property.
No, I understand that, no, I.
There's.
One second, Treasurer Larson, I understand it's part of the town property. I was under impression from what I was being told, it's for all of the town property, not just those two facilities.
It is. It's, it's to evaluate, from my understanding, when the request came in, it is to evaluate all the town-owned property. Now, the, there's that other ninety thousand that's supposed to study the land use of how we, how we, um, I guess permit property. There's two different things.
Okay, so the hundred thousand dollars is specifically for Town Hall and Public Works?
Well, Town Hall, Public Works, the grounds out there, we could add in the parks. It's, it's to look at our facilities, all of our properties, the whole. As we try to figure out, because the police want a new building, Public Works needs new space, what's the best option for, since there's two new spaces that we're looking at to renovate or create a new building, I don't know what it is, but it's basically getting a plan together on how we're going to utilize the property we currently own.
Okay, so I'm not going to get into the weeds of it. Just on the capital budget, building facilities, it just says Town Hall area and Public Works facilities. It don't really.
That's because that's what it was originally put in.
Okay.
But there has been further discussion we needed, because I mean, there's also the Montero property that we were thinking for the police station. But we want to incorporate, since we're going to do a new police station, and they want a new Public Works, we've got to look at it as a whole and get a study done as for the whole thing, and instead of doing pieces.
Okay, and since the new police station building is a state grant, a hundred thousand dollars secured for the study, I'm a.
It, it's actually, um, that needs to be updated, because I was just informed, um, yesterday that we received the other funding, so we now have two hundred and fifty thousand secured. And it is for the police station. We can use it for the planning and design. We can use the state funds first.
Is that a drawdown also?
Yes.
So if we don't go through, if then the grant just.
Then we can't.
Evaporates. Okay. All right, thank you. Um, I know I'm jumping from the fund balance or the, the capital budget now, and I don't know, because I haven't done my research. Where does the funds from the speed cameras go to? Does it go back to the police department line item, or does it come to the town?
It is in the, it is isolated for the police. So it is a police item. Um, right now, um, we are almost pretty much breaking even. The revenues are covering our costs for the contractor.
Okay.
And the overtime.
Okay, so there's no per se profit?
Right. I don't see a surplus. The revenues are not exceeding our expenses.
Okay, if there is a surplus, where does that money go to?
Well, it goes to the general fund. Again, it's general operations, so it would go to the general fund.
Okay, thank you. Um, and I'll close out, I will just, if we can get as much information as possible for Dorchester Community Center by the twentieth at our special meeting, that'd be great.
Director Phipps, have you received any additional written statements to be included in the record?
No, Madam Mayor, no additional statements have been received.
And we do not have a list of anyone who has signed up to speak this evening, is that correct?
No, Madam Mayor, we have no additional speakers today evening.
Okay, so, um, I'm really afraid to ask this next question. Do y'all have any more questions here? You have done a lot. It was just very thorough questions.
I have two admin questions, if that's okay, Madam Mayor.
Got it.
So first question is, I think I heard this in a previous meeting before. If we were to do a one percent merit raise across the board, just blanketed, that would cost roughly sixty thousand dollars. Is that correct?
That sounds about correct.
Okay, second question for you, or excuse me, actually, um, uh, acting town manager or town, town manager, uh, Ms. Minor. Can we get the department heads to the meeting on the twentieth? Can we make that formal request? Does that happen here, or do I have to do it on email? How do I make sure all the department heads are at that twentieth working, working session?
I can make that request.
Perfect, thank you so much.
Ahead?
Is your assessment of those grants based on state, but do we have anything to think about there or monitor?
Um, well, because we haven't secured the other two, which I have followed up, but I have not gotten any information on. Um, there, there may be a risk there. The other grants that are for like the highway, the safety highway, I can't comment on because I'm not the one managing those.
All right, good.
Yep.
All right. Um, Ms. Minor, Ms. Larson, do you have anything else to add before we conclude this public hearing?
Not at this time, Madam Mayor.
All right, thank you so much. This concludes the public hearing on the fiscal year twenty twenty-six financial plan budget and the town council. We will hear no further comments on questions regarding this issue at this time. I would entertain a motion to keep the public record open until, uh, four PM on May twentieth. Uh, do I have someone that would like to make that motion?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'll make said motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Uh, all in favor, please indicate. I, if you, uh, for roll call or nay. Uh, Mr. Town Clerk, could you please give us a roll call?
Mayor James?
Aye.
Councilman Gutenberg?
Aye.
Councilman McCordman?
Aye.
Councilman Sampson?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Madam Mayor, a motion passes.
Thank you very much. And if the public has any further input on the fiscal year twenty twenty-six or the previous fee, they should submit it via postal mail to the Legislative Service Department. I know, old school, or, uh, via email to legislative@townoflaplata.org. And with that, at nineteen twenty-six, I close, I officially close the public hearing. All right, next on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the regular meeting, April twenty-second, twenty twenty-five, and the special meeting on May twelfth, twenty twenty-five. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes as written?
Yes. Yep, a motion to, um, motion as stated, is that right?
You can say, you can repeat it, a motion to approve, uh, the regular meeting, April twenty-second, and the special meeting, May twelfth. Yes, it's really quick.
Yes, motion, motion to approve the meetings as, as stated.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Town Clerk, will you please do a roll call? When your name is called, please say aye if you approve the, uh, exception of the adoption of the minutes, and nay if you do not.
Mayor James?
Aye.
Councilman Gutenberg?
Aye.
Councilman McCordman?
Aye.
Councilman Sampson?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Madam Mayor, a motion passes.
Thank you very much. Next on the agenda is the disclosure of closed session on April twenty twenty, April twenty-second, twenty twenty-five. In accordance to the Maryland Open Meetings Act, public bodies are required to disclose the general topics discussed and the statutory authority for any closed session, and the closed disclosure must be presented at the next open meeting. Attached to the agenda for today's meeting, you will find a written summary of the closed session held on Tuesday, April twenty-second, twenty twenty-five. For the record, I will now read the required disclosure into the minutes. The town council convened in a closed session on April twenty-second, twenty twenty-five, following proper vote and announcement in accordance with the Maryland Open Meetings Act. The session was held at Town Hall and began at seven thirty PM. The meeting was closed pursuant statutory authority to closed session three dash three oh five B seven. The purpose of the closed session was to discuss, it was to consult with council to obtain legal advice. The topic was Magnolia Gardens and Wastewater Treatment Plant, the Maryland Department of Environment. Present at the meeting were Councilman Jenkins, Councilman Winkler, Mayor James, Councilman Trolinger, Attorney Gallow, Director of Legislative Services, Kelly Phipps, Assistant Town Manager Michelle Minor, and Town Clerk Lawrence Jones. The session adjourned at seven fifty-five PM. This summary is now entered into the record, and a written copy is attached to the meeting agenda as required. We come to, uh, our public comment. If you're still there and still awake, we have one person that has signed up right now. Uh, Ms. Ollie, if you would like to come on down, state your name for the record, and. Ms. Ollie, if you would like to come on down, state your name for the record and, um, if you could keep your comments to three minutes and I see it. Yeah, I got you. The floor is yours.
Sorry. Good afternoon, County Council and Madam Mayor. I am Tarina Ollie, resident of Ward Three. And I was just reading the study from the election says that in Ward Three, they had an 81% increase in voter turnout, which I think is absolutely amazing. And I believe that as a resident, we would like to strike the iron wise hot to keep the voter turnout, to keep the engaged residents, um, there. And so I'm proposing, I'm having a walk for your ward where I invite the council to participate because May 31st as the last day of mental health month to increase the engagement because we want to have voter turnout to continue on and to hear from the residents. Cause standing here is intimidating for a lot of residents and people sometimes will not email. So I think it's a great way for residents to come together and also to celebrate the last day of mental health month. And it will be held at Tilgman Lake, May 31st from nine AM to 11 PM. So bring your waters, your sunscreen, and it'll be a great opportunity for council to engage with residents that they may not otherwise have met. And thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. And if you, if we could impose upon you to, um, email that to us, that would be great. And I would like to personally thank you. Thank you for being an engaged citizen and running for an office. That is not easy. You did an amazing job getting out there and you really did obviously invigorate the voting base, at least in Ward Three. So thank you for that. Um, and I look forward to receiving that information and participating on the 31st.
And thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. Good to hear.
Are there any other speakers out there that would like to speak? All right. Next on the agenda is, uh, under matters of discussion, fiscal year 2026 tax rate. Ms. Minor.
Um, Madam Mayor, the tax rate did not change this year. It is 35 cents per $100 of assessed value. So being said, no public hearing is required for that. That's why we didn't have a public hearing, um, since there was no change. And as, um, if get a consensus, uh, I don't, uh, consensus ordinance is we're going to do the first reading and introduction, um, a little bit later in the agenda.
So from council, I'm looking for a consensus to move this forward to legislation. Councilman Gutenberg?
Yes.
Councilman McCormick?
Yes.
Johnson, I mean, Councilman Sampson, sorry.
Yes.
Councilman Johnson?
Yes, I do have a question though, please. This is, you said it wasn't a public hearing, but is the tax study included in service fees or the tax rate, excuse me?
The tax rate didn't change, so there was no public hearing required.
Okay, thank you.
All right. And I am a, aye as well. So that will move forward. We'll see it in legislation in just a bit. Second one is wastewater treatment plant sludge pump purpose, purchase.
Um, Madam Mayor, you have, and town council, you have a memo here from our wastewater treatment superintendent, um, if you have any questions for him.
Could you just summarize it for the public very quickly? Thank you so much.
Uh, I'm Kirk Parks. I'm the wastewater plant superintendent. So treatment and disposal of sludge is a vital part of the operations of all wastewater plants. Um, here in the town of La Plata, we process it all ourselves and then we transport it to Virginia for disposal. Uh, one of the vital pieces of equipment that we need for this is a sludge pump, which transfers from tanks to our processing equipment. Recently, uh, we had an issue with the current pump that we have. Uh, we're expecting repairs to be done Thursday. Um, but if there are other issues, I'm doing a backup plan to where I want to have a second pump ready. The second pump was included in FY25, so it's already been budgeted. Um, we budgeted $75,000 for the last fiscal year or this current fiscal year. Um, and the current price is $56,050 for the new pump and parts. Um, and so, uh, I'm asking council and the mayor to, uh, approve this request for the new pump.
I apologize. You said 75K is currently budgeted. This is 56K.
Correct.
Okay. So no, no new revenue needed.
I'm not asking for any extra money. This is already budgeted, uh, out of the wastewater plant.
And then just very quickly, impacted the town, positive, negative, give us just the, the quick two to three sentencer.
It's going to be a positive. Um, we, we, this is a vital piece of equipment. This is an emergency. Um, we hope to have it fixed. But in case it breaks again, or, uh, the fix does not work, I would like to have this backup.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yep.
All right. Are there any questions from, uh, council?
I, I do, Madam Mayor. Are you, it's already budgeted. Are you asking because it's in excess of $20,000?
Correct. Yes.
Okay. For me, is the hose, is that what's broke? I don't.
Uh, no, the, uh, the gearbox broke. And so we've ordered new bearings and we've ordered a new gearbox, which will be here Thursday. Um, but the pump is, uh, I think it's around 10 years old. So it is old. And so I would like to have a spare, which is what we were budgeting.
Yeah, still foreign to me, but I'll, I'll, I'll learn. Thank you.
I, 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 I hope I can get you all to come visit the wastewater plant.
Thank you.
We can do a tutorial, but I'm, I'm excited for that. So.
All right. I'm looking for a consensus to move this forward. Councilman Gutenberg. Councilman McCormick.
Yes.
Councilman Sampson.
Yes.
Councilman Johnson.
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. We will get that on in legislation. Uh, 7.3 was added into, um, onto the agenda. It is the adoption of rules of a procedure. At this time, I'd like to move forward with the adoption of the rules of procedure in accordance with resolution 23 dash 01, which we would be adopting. The rules of procedures may be reviewed and adopted annually following an election at an organizational meeting or, or a day after an organizational meeting, whatever the case may be. Since this meeting is a day after our organizational meeting, um, it is appropriate to take action at this time. Do I have a motion to adopt the rules of procedure as presented?
Motion to adopt the rules for the procedures as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I think it has been moved in, seconded to, had properly seconded to adopt the rules of procedure in accordance with resolution 23 dash 01. Is there any, uh, discussion?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Just to be clear, this is the rules of procedures that were revised on, back in January 2023.
That is correct. That's 2301.
Okay. And the council can call for amendment at a regular meeting. If we email seven days before, if we want to go through amendments, like how do we get this back? Cause right now we're just adopting them to have them.
Adopting them to be in compliance. And what we will do is we, uh, in order to, uh, comply with the open meetings act, this has to be brought forward and it would be at a work session. So all the work that you all did prior to this is awesome, but that is in direct violation of the open meetings act. So we would have to start from scratch and just sit down and talk over what we would like to see, um, updated in the rules of procedures. And then it will go to the council, to our attorney to review, and then it will go up for adoption, which would be, uh, via a resolution.
Okay. One, we were councilman elect, so we didn't violate the act.
You did. Uh, that's, there was intent. You did not get the email, but the email was sent at 1:24 today. It bounced back and it outlined everything. One of the, it was a violation of three dash 103A, which said there was an intent, even when you were council members, when you were not elected. There was an intent to bring it into open meetings to, to adopt it. And you did this all together. So it was a direct violation. And that's why we did not discuss it today, cause if we had brought it in and we had voted on it, we would be in violation of the open meetings.
Okay. I'm assuming that's opinion from the town attorney.
Yes. And it's backed up with, uh, code.
Yeah, I'm just asking this opinion from the town attorney though.
It's not an opinion. It's fact.
Okay. Um, secondly, the work session, are you going to, is that being classified as a regular meeting or is that being called as a special meeting?
Well, we, we've got a motion on the floor and we're just
Well, we're in discussion. Yeah.
But that is, uh, it would be whatever, um, it would be a work session. It's considered a work session.
No, I'll just make it short, cause the rules state it can only be changed in a regular meeting. So is that work session considered a regular meeting? Okay.
So I have a motion that has been properly seconded. Hearing no further discussion. The town, town clerk will now take a roll call. When your name is called, please say aye in favor or no if you are opposed.
Mayor James.
Aye.
Councilman Gutenberg.
Aye.
Councilman McCormick.
Aye.
Councilman Sampson.
No.
Councilman Johnson.
No.
All right, Madam Mayor, a motion passes.
Okay. Thank you very much. Next on the agenda is the appointment to boards and commissions. In accordance with resolution 2301, which we just adopted, it states the purpose of the organizational meeting shall be the appointment of town council members as members, uh, or liaison to committees, commissions, boards and multi-juridist jurisdictional agencies. The appointment of Mayor Pro Tem and the conduct of such organizational business as may come before the council. Appointments of council members shall be announced by the mayor at the organizational meeting and shall become effective when approved by a vote of the town council. If desired, the town council may review appointments on an annual basis. So these were brought forward to me on a pre-organizational meeting that the four of, of, uh, the candidates had. And they had, uh, decided which, um, boards and committees that they would like to serve on. There is still one missing, which we will have to resolve tonight before I can adjourn the meeting. But, uh, on this one, for the purpose of the public's knowledge, I am going to ask each of you, uh, a question. What makes you qualified to serve on the committee you've been nominated for? And what specific goals or priorities do you have for your role in that committee to contribute to its success and betterment of our community? For design and review board, Councilman Sampson.
Yes, Madam Mayor. So for design and review, my background and qualifications from the planning commission will help me to fulfill that duty and role.
Great. Do you have any specific goals or priorities, uh, for this?
I need to see what they're working on first before I can, uh, do that.
Okay. Thank you very much. And I will make a motion to appoint Councilman Sampson to the design review board. Do I have a second?
Second.
Um, all in favor, we need a roll call. If you are in favor, please say aye. If you're opposed, say nay. Uh, Mr. Town Clerk?
Mayor James.
Aye.
Councilman Gutenberg.
Aye.
Councilman McCormick.
Aye.
Councilman Sampson.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson.
Aye.
Madam Mayor, a motion passes.
Thank you very much. The next one is beautification committee and keep La Plata beautiful is, uh, Councilman McCormick.
Yeah. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. First and foremost, as a resident, obviously keeping this beautiful town, beautiful, it's incredibly important. So this was a Ward Two initiative with Councilman Trolinger owning this during the last session. So I think the normal continuance of governance makes sense here, similar to Councilman Sampson. I'm sure Councilman Gutenberg and Councilman Johnson will say the same thing. I've started to go through some of the previous meetings and the notes. Again, I'm at a very surface level understanding as to what the game plan is for this year. I do not believe it's my job to come in and change direction, but rather support the mission. So I'm really looking forward to that and I appreciate this opportunity, Madam Mayor.
I make a motion to appoint, uh, Councilman McCormick to beautification committees, uh, keep La Plata beautiful. Do I have a second?
Second.
Um, any discussion? Mr. Town Clerk, if you could please do a roll call. When your name is called, if you are in favor, please say aye. If you're opposed, please say nay.
Mayor James.
Aye.
Councilman Gutenberg.
Aye.
Councilman McCormick.
Aye.
Councilman Sampson.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson.
Aye.
Madam Mayor, a motion passes.
Thank you very much. Next is the planning commission. Councilman, uh, Gutenberg.
Yes. Uh, so, uh, for the past, my, my background is the past 20 years, I've been an engineering manager, uh, with a large, uh, DOD contractor. So I'm, I'm used to working with engineering mindset folks, which I know the planning, uh, commission and the planning department is full of. Um, I'm also, uh, very interested in, um, helping out in that area because of its, um, relationship to what I, I believe that the, the new council is going to tackle with an APFO. Um, I also have a particular background in capacity management programs and which has a direct correlation to what I think we're trying to achieve with an APFO. Um, and so I really look forward to getting going with this, uh, this committee. I think it's going to be a really interesting opportunity to make some impact in the town. That'll be for good. So.
You sound like a good fit. And I make a motion to appoint, uh, Councilman Gutenberg to the planning commission. Do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, any discussion?
Yeah, just real quick. I want to echo, uh, really looking forward to your work with the planning commission. I know how passionate you are and the town will be well served by you. Thank you.
Mr. Town Clerk, would you please, uh, do a roll call?
Mayor James.
Aye.
Councilman Gutenberg.
Aye.
Councilman McCormick.
Aye.
Councilman Sampson.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson.
Aye.
Madam Mayor, a motion passes.
Thank you very much. And Parks and Recreation Commission is Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, one, it's a learning journey. So I have my first meeting tomorrow if the appointment holds to at 7:30 in the morning. Um, I have an invested interest in ensuring that the amenities that the residents have townwide or in neighborhoods are the ones they deserve.
Then I will make a motion to appoint Councilman Johnson to the Parks and Recreation Commission. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Town Clerk, would you please do a roll call?
Mayor James.
Aye.
Councilman Gutenberg.
Aye.
Councilman McCormick.
Aye.
Councilman Sampson.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson.
Aye.
Madam Mayor, a motion passes.
Thank you very much. And we have one committee that is left, um, unmanned right now or woman. Uh, historically, the member who serves on the design review board also serves on the historic preservation commission, uh, commission, which would be you, Councilman Sampson. Are you willing to serve on this commission as well?
No.
Okay. Um, is there someone that would like to step up to serve on this commission?
So just a point of order. Yeah. Um, and just out of curiosity, does it have to be a town council member? Could we potentially discuss the option of the mayor serving on it?
Town council because the mayor serves on other boards.
No problem. I was just asking for identification. That's all. I, I also, I guess, have a question. So, um, if, uh, I, I haven't looked at what the times are that they meet, but, um,
It was provided to you, but it is, um, they meet, uh, Director Pips. I think they meet every two months at 11 AM on a Friday. Uh, every two months, right? Every other month? Right? So that would be it.
Okay. Um, I, I could work at a best effort and try and make those meetings. It doesn't sound like there's very many and, and I don't want to hold up the proceedings on not being able to have a person. So I will, uh, I will step up to that.
Thank you so much. Uh, I really appreciate that. So I make a motion to appoint Councilman, uh, Gutenberg to the Historic Preservation Commission. Do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, any discussion? Mr. Town Clerk, would you please give a roll call?
Mayor James.
Yes.
Councilman Gutenberg.
Aye.
Councilman McCormick.
Aye.
Councilman Sampson.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson.
Aye.
Madam Mayor, a motion passes.
Thank you very much. And we have, uh, Mayor Pro Tem. Historically, it's been underutilized, so that may be a good thing, may not be a good thing. But, uh, I know in your pre-organizational meeting, the four of you decided that the first one to serve as Mayor Pro Tem would be Councilman Johnson. Do you fully understand the responsibilities of Mayor Pro Tem role and are you prepared to assume these duties in the absence of the mayor?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Then I make a motion to appoint, uh, Councilman Johnson as the Mayor Pro Tem. Do I have a second?
Yeah, I proudly second it.
Um, all in favor? Oh, sorry. Any discussion? Mr. Town Clerk, would you please take, uh, roll call?
Mayor James.
Aye.
Councilman Gutenberg.
Aye.
Councilman McCormick.
Aye.
Councilman Sampson.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson.
Aye.
Madam Mayor, a motion passes.
Thank you very much. That brings us to our legislation ordinance 25 dash 06 fiscal year tax rate. This is a first reading and for introduction.
Madam Mayor, an ordinance concerning Town of La Plata fiscal year 2026 fee schedule for the purpose of adopting Town of La Plata fiscal year 20 26 FY26 fee schedule dealing with fees set by the Town of La Plata and all matters generally relating thereto.
Thank you very much. Uh, resolution 25 dash 06 wastewater treatment plant sludge pump purchase.
I'm sorry, ma'am. Are you looking for a motion, a motion, Madam Mayor?
I do not. It's only
Okay.
Madam Mayor, a resolution concerning wastewater treatment plant sludge pump purchase for the purpose of authorizing the chief executive officer to enter into a contract purchase agreement for the purchase of a sludge pump for the wastewater treatment plant and all matters generally relating thereto.
Thank you very much. Do I have a motion to accept resolution 25 dash 06 as presented?
And in point of inquiry, just for discussion, correct? We're not voting on it or we are voting on this? Okay. And this is what was just discussed by Public Works, correct?
Yes.
Beautiful. Thank you. Uh, I make said motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Town Clerk, would you please do a roll call?
Mayor James.
Aye.
Councilman Guttenberg.
Aye.
Councilman McCormick.
Aye.
Councilman Sampson.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson.
Aye.
Madam Mayor, the motion passes.
Fantastic. And the last item on our agenda is reports from mayor and council. Uh, I am assuming since we just did the boards and commission, that there is, oh, but you look like you have.
I, I do. There's two more ordinances.
I thought that they were not because we did not, um, we kept the, them open? Or we didn't.
The record open?
Yep, we kept the record open, so we are not.
Okay.
Director Phipps, is that correct? Because we kept the record open, we are not, um, introducing the two ordinances?
On the fee schedule and on the financial plan budget, correct, ma'am?
Okay. There you go. All right. That was a good one, Michelle. You tried to get me on that one. All right. And the only report I have is that May twenty-third starts our, um, summer series for our concerts out here on the lawn, which is awesome. We've got, uh, Hannah coming back. She's flying in from Colorado. Girl Crush is starting us off. I know Lucinda has done an amazing job in conjunction with Colleen to set up a fantastic summer concert schedule. So be sure to start, uh, planning your Friday nights here. There will be food for purchase. Uh, bring your lawn chairs, some bug spray and, and just, uh, enjoy the music here out on the, uh, town hall here. And with that, I move to adjourn at nineteen fifty-one, seven fifty-one P M. Thank you very much. Great first, uh, regular meeting.